Okay, good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Villa Park City Council. I hereby call the meeting to order and Steve, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Woodfast-Nelly?
The President.
Councilman Nelson?
Here.
Councilman Fitz?
President.
Mayor Protem Reesey?
Here.
Mayor Collet? Here. To open our council meeting, we continue our tradition of inviting Villa Park distinguished citizens to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Steve, would you come up, please? Tonight, we are pleased that Stephen Kramer has accepted our invitation. Steve Kramer is an attorney with the United States Department of Justice. He was raised in Florida, Texas, Wisconsin, and Arizona, graduating from the University of Arizona with an accounting and finance degree. He was a member of the Law Review of the California Western School of Law in San Diego, where he interned at the San Diego District Attorney and worked on DNA-related legal issues that were used in arguments in the O.J. Simpson case. Steve moved back to Arizona, where he was a homicide prosecutor in Phoenix at the county attorney's office, and returned to California in the late 90s and began his career with the United States Department of Justice. While back in California, Steve obtained an MBA from UCLA while he pursued white collar criminals and terrorists as a federal prosecutor. As detailed in the Los Angeles Times and the New York Times earlier this year, Steve helped develop the lead team, or Steve helped lead the team that identified the Golden State Killer in April of this year. The Golden State Killer was the most prolific uncaught serial killer in modern U.S. history. The Golden State Killer is attributed with at least 13 murders and over 50 rapes in California between 1976 and 1986, with four of the murders occurring in Orange County. Although DNA samples had been collected from a number of murders and rapes, there was no match in the FBI's national DNA database or in California's forensic database bank. Stephen forensic criminologist Paul Holes came up with the idea of using publicly available genealogy databases to identify the Golden State Killer through distant relatives. In April, Joseph James D'Angelo Jr., a 70-year-old former police officer, was arrested based on the technique developed by Steve. This breakthrough marks a novel investigative technique that has helped identify and capture over a dozen cold case killers and rapists throughout the country in just the last five months. And just last week, on September 10th, Steve met with United States Attorney General Jeff Sessions for over an hour to describe the technique he developed to use publicly available DNA databases to identify criminals. This is definitely going to make our whole society a lot safer. Steve and his wife Kathy moved to Villa Park in 2008 and have three active daughters that participate in softball, swimming, ballet, and other activities. Steve also co-founded Frontier's Academy, a private Mandarin and Spanish-language immersion elementary school in Anaheim in 2013. In addition to his professional endeavors and spending time with his friends and family, Steve enjoys surfing, mountain biking on our local trails, and running the hills of Villa Park. And Steve, will you please lead us in the pledge?
Thank you, Mayor Protem and members of the city council. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll knock down, have our...
Thank you very much.
It's your...
Let me just announce, we did have two closed session items that I'm required to report. There was no reportable action in either of those. And the council, before we went into closed session, did add an agenda item pertaining to the Mesa Henderson Storm Drain Extension. That is going to be number 12.5 that we'll be talking about. Sorry. Yeah, so...
Sorry, there was too much commotion going on.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We did, I'm required under the Brown Act to report out after closed session. We did have two closed session items, one matter of anticipated litigation and one of existing litigation, which is the Santana homeless lawsuit. There's no reportable action under law under each of those, but we did discuss two matters. And then also, the council did add an item to the agenda, had a vote right before we went into closed session. We're calling it item 12.5 pertaining to the Mesa Henderson Storm Drain Extension, which is a request for the extension of the storm drain at that property to go to the property to the, what is that, north?
East.
East. Yeah, to the east to extend that storm drain. So we're going to be talking about that at that point in time. That has been added to the agenda.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I would like to ask all those in the audience to please silence their cellphones and turn them off if possible. The Villa Park City Council and staff welcome you to this meeting and we encourage your participation. If you wish to address the city council, please complete and submit a speaker card to the city clerk before the scheduled meeting time. And speaker cards can be found at the entrance to the city council chambers. Speakers will be limited to a time period of five minutes. I'd also like to remind all in attendance that the council meeting is where the city conducts its business. Although we encourage your participation, you're expected to do so in an orderly manner. Meetings are conducted according to Robert's Rules of Order, and this applies to the council as well as the audience. So if you wish to speak, please raise your hand and be recognized. So, and also, please address your comments to the mayor. Okay, we now move on to presentations. I'd like to, let's see, have now the first presentation from the Orange County Sheriff's Department?
The sheriff, we kind of threw him for a loop when we changed to a Wednesday schedule, so unfortunately, he has a conflict and unable to make it tonight. He will be submitting a written report on the month's activities. He's just unable to be here at this time.
Can I make a comment? I met with a couple of deputies here today, and I want to reiterate the importance of all of us locking our cars in our driveways. We had several incidents that took place recently where people's cars were broken into. They left them open. Nothing was taken out of four or five of them, but still, it's very, I talked to the deputy, he said, "Please, please tell people to lock their cars and keep them locked so it doesn't induce someone to want to break in and steal personal information and so forth and so on and so." Please, whoever's listening, lock your doors, okay?
Good point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well now move on to the Orange County Fire Authority.
Well, good evening, mayor, council, city staff, and residents of Villa Park. My name is Andy Kovacs, and I'm the Fire Services Chief for the city. This evening, I'd like to thank the city for helping us recognize Fire Prevention Week. Fire Prevention Week will begin October 7th and conclude on the 13th. This year's campaign is look, listen, and learn. Be aware, fire can happen anywhere. Sounds like a Dr. Seuss rhyme, actually.
First, look for places where fire can start.
Look at your dryer, clean the lint out from around it, look for combustible materials, for example, around your hot water heater, the use of extension cords, et cetera. Listen for the sound of a smoke alarm. We always remind residents to change their batteries to coincide with daylight savings, so that'll be coming up here shortly. And more importantly, if residents don't know, the Orange County Fire Authority installs free smoke alarms. So all you need to do is go to our website, and you can request the fire engine company to come out and install multiple smoke alarms in your home if required. And thirdly, learn. Learn two ways out of every room, and of course, and if you have a two-story home and you have small children, there are manufacturers that make ladders that are collapsible, they can be tucked underneath a child's bed, and then they can be deployed out a window as needed. Of course, you can always visit Orange County Fire Authority's website, www.ocla.org for more information, or this year, for Fire Prevention Week, you can visit the National Fire Association, excuse me, National Fire Protection Association website at nfp.org. Thank you.
Okay. We'd also like to present you with our, the city's proclamation declaring October 7th through the 13th as Fire Prevention Week. And thank you very much for all you do for us.
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
Thanks. Want me to open? Thank you. Thank you.
With the council's permission, I'm going to ask that the chief be able to go home. He's injured himself, so he's going to be sitting there in pain, and I don't want to have to look over at him, so.
[laughing]
So if we can send him home with our best wishes.
Good night, chief.
Thank you.
Okay, our next presentation is from the Orange Unified School District, and I see Dr. Hanson's here, and we'll be...
Yes, um, Steve, because...
Okay. Hi Kathy?
I'm going to lead off this evening. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, city staff, it's a pleasure to be here, and thank you for the honor of allowing us to speak. On behalf of the Orange Unified School District, my board president, Dr. Alexia Delagiani, and my colleagues, it's an honor to be here as we finalize plans to make a large and really wonderful improvement at Villa Park High School. The district is grateful that residents throughout our school district, and particularly those here in Villa Park, have supported strengthening our schools. It's a long time coming and so very much needed. Our board takes the public trust that has been placed in us very seriously. We have sought to be frugal, and we continue to always seek to be frugal. We want to be community-focused, and we want to work in partnership with the cities that we serve in order to ensure that our taxpayer dollars are used extremely wisely. Villa Park High School is already an asset to the city with its high test scores, with its award-winning programs, and high graduation rates. And we also know that the open space on the campus of Villa Park schools are welcome spaces of greenery for recreation, sports, and events. Improving that physical facility will allow the exterior of our school to match what goes on and has been going on inside the doors for a long time, which has been a world-class education for our children. Over the past 18 months, our staff and yours have worked together collaboratively to ensure that the final plans for the high school meet the community's needs as well as those of our students. The plans that you will see presented later on this evening by our staff represent months of diligent review, accommodation, and cooperation between our district and the city, and we thank you for that. As a resident of Villa Park, I know the struggle that school site traffic causes for drivers in our community, and I'm proud to say that our collaboration represents a step forward to improve those issues. As we all know, it's been almost 50 years since the high school was built, and when it was built, with the driveways and pass access points, they were developed for a far different time with different kinds of traffic circumstances and different kinds of walking and driving customs at that time. I'm pleased to say that district staff has recognized the unique needs of the community here in Villa Park and has taken into consideration the proximity of neighboring schools. Taft is one of our city's primary throughways, and it was important to look beyond the school itself and to assess all impacts. The plans that you will hear and see this evening represent improved traffic flow for Villa Park High School, but also for those passing through our city onto Saraville Middle School, Serrano Elementary, and those continuing on to work in the morning. Most importantly, the plans that you will see include enhanced safety features for drivers and pedestrians alike that were developed collaboratively between your team and ours. Like you, our district is very dedicated to public safety, and this plan provides for that, we're happy to say. I would like to thank the city manager, Mr. Franks, and staff for their assistance in shepherding this effort so that we could come to this point together. And I thank all of you for your continued partnership. The final result will be something that I think we will all be proud of upon its completion and for another 50 years. We have just begun planning for the groundbreaking ceremony at Villa Park High School, and while each of you will receive your own invitation, I would like to extend to you my personal invitation to attend the groundbreaking ceremony that will be held sometime in December. I don't know that the date has been set yet, but it's a very nice ceremony, and it certainly marks an historic occasion for the city of Villa Park and certainly for the Orange Unified School District, and we'd be honored if you were to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other presentations from OUSD? Okay, thank you very much.
Mayor, if I could, there'll be an item later in the agenda, we'll be talking about that, that she was referring to.
Right.
So I just want to make sure that people stay tuned.
Okay. Okay, do we have a representative from the Villa Park Library?
No, we don't. We're in a transition mode with a new librarian, has not been selected at this point, so.
Okay.
I do have some announcements for the library. This Saturday, we have an event from the Friends of the Library, is putting it on called Authors and Appetizers.
Can you please wait to be recognized before you begin speaking?
I'm a board member.
We're addressing that, we're addressing that item later on...
No, actually, it's the library, I'm making the library report, Bob.
No, the library report comes down under the Villa Park, Friends of the...
Villa Park Library?
Yeah, we'll be dealing with that.
Well, thank you very much. I hope to see everybody on Saturday at the Assistance League for Appetizers and Authors that will be benefiting the Friends of the Library.
Please try to conform with Robert's Rules of Order.
Thank you.
Okay. The first meeting attendance report is the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District?
We haven't had a meeting. Our meeting is next, is tomorrow.
Okay. Orange County Sanitation District, the Operations Committee met on September 5th, and we discussed routine operation maintenance items, nothing significant to report. Orange County Fire Authority?
Good evening. I was unable to attend the August meeting due to a very, very close friend, somebody that I would consider a family member who is unfortunately suffering from a terminal brain tumor, and I went out to spend time with them. I was informed of this at the very last second, otherwise I would have made arrangements with another council member to cover. But I'll have more info on that particular meeting next month, given the fact that we have another meeting coming up, and if there's significant matters to report, I will provide that. I did, however, have the opportunity to attend a Human Resources Committee special meeting on September 4th when I returned, and that dealt with recruiting, the promotional process, and something called the Girls Empowerment Camp, which is a very important tool to bring diversity to the Orange County Fire Authority. It's something that is extremely important to the Fire Authority, and frankly, I think Orange County as a whole. And I'll have more on that at another time. And the remainder of the meeting dealt with closed session matters that, of course, I can't discuss at this time. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
I do. You mentioned that next time you would have another council member attend. I just want to remind you, we don't have an alternate for the Orange County Fire Authority. So if you don't attend, it's okay that you didn't, but there is not an alternate.
I am well aware of that, but I appreciate your clarification for the community, but I would have somebody attend in the audience to report. Thank you.
Okay. Orange County Library Advisory Board?
No meeting.
No meeting? Budget and Finance?
No meeting.
City Schools Advisory?
I will give my report at the end of the evening. Thank you.
Okay. Community Development?
I think there are agenda items that we'll review tonight, that we had a CDC meeting this afternoon. There were two primary items that are also on the agenda for the council to look at tonight, so that'll be part of the meeting.
Okay. And I'm the representative on the Friends of the Villa Park Library. The Friends of the Villa Park Library was formed in 1995, and our library was threatened with closure due to the county bankruptcy. I think many of us remember those days. Since then, the Friends has assisted in remodeling the library, purchasing books, periodicals, and books on tape, and has kept our library viable for our community. On this coming Saturday, the 22nd, the Friends is hosting a fundraiser entitled Authors and Appetizers from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. in the Assistance League Chapter House at 124 South Orange Street in Orange. The authors that will be invited are Bob Connell, a Villa Park distinguished citizen and author, who will discuss his first published book, novel, and Merrius Wills, who has published many books. This is the book that was written by Bob Connell. It's now in publication. I just started reading it, and already, it's caught my attention. This is going to be a great read. I'd encourage everybody to attend the event on Saturday and buy the book. I think you'll enjoy it, and particularly since we've got a resident who is one of our distinguished residents who will be speaking. Tickets are $40 and only available...
They're $45.
Well, I was notified that it was 40, but if it's 45, that's fine. And only available at the Library and City Hall through tomorrow. And I'm sure you want to enjoy the refreshments, visit with friends, and hear from the authors and support our library. Also, I have a couple of flyers that I'll leave with the city manager in case anybody would like more information to attend. The next committee report is Human Resources?
No meeting.
Infrastructure Management Advisory. The Infrastructure Management Advisory Committee met on September 13th. In addition to review of ongoing infrastructure projects, the committee decided to focus on development of a pavement management plan, including preventive maintenance as the first step in developing an overall infrastructure management plan for the city. Investment Advisory?
No meeting.
Law Enforcement Advisory?
Monday, September 10th, the Law Enforcement Advisory Committee met, and we discussed issues facing our community, thankfully, very few of which really are all that significant. The first thing we started off with was a transient issue. We have litigation that we've discussed previously, but as far as an active transient population, we're very fortunate, we don't have that issue in Villa Park. We received updated staff from Orange County Sheriff's Department, traffic violations and parking enforcement. We appreciate the activities of our deputies in keeping us safe on that. Neighborhood Watch provided an update, and their ranks continue to grow. So I thank Marion Wayne Salzell for that and helping keeping us safe. Discussion of National Night Out, again, a tremendous success despite the heat, and then the PSR program. And lastly, emergency preparedness. The Orange County Fire Authority Wildfire Preparedness Town Hall will be occurring on September 25th, this next Tuesday, between 6:00 and 7:30 p.m. right here in Villa Park City Hall Council Chambers, and I would invite everybody to attend. It's going to be a very knowledgeable, it's going to be a very interesting and knowledge-filled evening. I'm sure the chief can talk a little bit about what we're going to be going over, if you have just a second or two before you take off. Sorry to make you get up again.
That's okay, I know. Yeah, so next Tuesday, we'll be hosting a town hall meeting for emergency preparedness, and it will be myself and the Orange County Sheriff's Department. And we did something in Tustin just last year after the Canyon Two fire, so we're going to focus on our program, which is a Ready, Set, Go program. It basically informs homeowners of how to prepare for a wildfire. And one of the services that the Fire Authority offers free of charge is that we can come out and do a free home assessment to determine where there's deficiencies in your home as it relates to wildfire preparedness. So we'll discuss that, we'll discuss the other important things to consider, living in the urban interface, much like the Villa Park area here, and we'll talk about things like hardening your home, preparing to leave your home in the event of emergency, collecting valuables, kind of pre-planning those things, medications, important documents, computer hard drives, et cetera, and then what to do when you have to, you get the order to go. And we'll talk about evacu, the Sheriff's Department will talk about evacuation routes and reunification centers and things like that. So I would definitely encourage all residents to attend. Should be a very informative evening. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you. Okay, public safety?
No.
No meeting? Public Works and Engineering, no meeting, and Villa Park Community Services Foundation?
I was unable to attend a meeting, but I would like to highlight some things that I think are near and dear to the foundation's heart. First of all, the, most of you know, every year, we host a group of Marines here in Villa Park. Given the opportunity, it's a wonderful thing to do, to invite a Marine into your home. And I'll tell you, Elizabeth and I have done that in the past and thoroughly enjoyed it. You know, to see the smile on their face and take part with a family and be a part of your family is very heartwarming, and to see them all just get excited about it. So that's coming up. Robert Frakleton is leading the charge on that, so I encourage anybody and everybody to get involved with that. The Community Center Subcommittee is still hard at work with the development plans for the Community Center. There's a meeting next week that we are all attending to have further discussions on funding and so forth. And also, last but not least, the foundation's experiencing some decline in funding, and I would encourage all of you, including some of us on the council, to become members and also to help encourage funding for some of the events that are upcoming that they have slated, so that we can have some fun in Villa Park. So that was my...
Thank you, Rodney.
Mr. Fitz, I want to let you know that I am a member, have been a long serving member.
I know that.
Okay.
You and me both.
Okay. At this time, members of the public may address the council on any off-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, provided that no action may be taken on an off-agenda item unless authorized by law. Opportunities will also be provided for public comment on each agenda item. Comments are limited to five minutes per person and 30 minutes for all comments. Okay, are there any speakers for public comment?
Yes, we received one form from Janice Borkland. I hope I pronounced that right. Okay.
The name I usually go by is better. I'm Janice Swift Borkland, 9342 Hunting Circle, Villa Park. I just wanted to make a comment that my husband and I attended the meeting last month on the rumor that the city was being sued and the potential of a expense to the city. I was delighted to hear during the month that the court has denied that writ and that we are now all going to be free to vote for whoever we want to vote for. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And that concludes the comments.
We don't know, I don't know if anyone else is...
Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, we now move on to public hearings, and our first hearing is the review to waive reading and all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda. Staff, please give the staff report.
Item number three is a motion to waive the reading. As the mayor indicated, this is a routine monthly item that we agendize. In order to expedite and make the meetings more efficient, we read and waive the reading of the ordinances in detail, so we recommend approval.
Council members, do you have any questions of staff?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Got a flash.
Waiting for a flash.
There we go.
It's a short hair.
There we go. [laughing] There we go.
One more time, I'm sorry.
You're ahead of two today. Passes 5-0.
Move on to our next hearing. Our next hearing is the Conditional Use Permit 28, or 2018-03. A request for approval to permit a detached two-story, 1,089-square-foot guest house, which is part of a new single-family residential project, to exceed the maximum allowable building height of 15 feet to 24 feet, located on a vacant 2,000, or 20,081-square-foot lot in the E4 or Small Estates Residential Zoning District. Staff, please give the staff report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Item number four was heard by the Community Development Committee this afternoon, and they raised a number of concerns regarding this. Specifically, they were concerned about the potential precedent that would set throughout the city, so they would ask that the staff notify all the city, or do a public notice so that the city has a chance to weigh in on this item. I think that's recognizing it well. So staff would respectfully request that the council basically continue this item until the next meeting on October 23rd. In the meantime, we can certainly answer any questions, and we'll make a point to notify or send out a public notice to the entirety of the city residents, as opposed to just those that we noticed, which would be at 300 square, 300 feet from the residents at this time. So I would defer to Councilman Pitts and the mayor for any additional comments they may have on.
No, I just, I think we all agreed that it was prudent for us to, because we are setting precedents with this ordinance, and, I mean, with this CUP, and felt like it would be prudent for the rest of the community to kind of weigh in, because this is, it's one of the first two-story dwelling units that are, it's not attached to the building, but it's a second unit on the property. And we just wanna make sure that everyone's aware of, of what's being asked, and if it is, if it is approved, that it'll set precedence going forward for that type of unit. So we want the community to have an opportunity between now and the next council meeting to take a look at this, understand what's going on with it, and then have the opportunity to come to the next council meeting and weigh in on, if there's any issues or concerns or questions. So we, we move that, we, we delay it until-
Continue, the item will be continued.
Continue it until next, next council meeting.
Yeah, and just to clarify, this relates specifically to detached-
Yes.
-second units.
Yes.
And I'll second the motion.
I had a question regarding this item. Is this a guest house or accessory dwelling unit?
The, I would answer that the owner and the architect have characterized this as a guest house.
What does the plan say?
It, it is a guest house on the plans.
So it does not have a kitchen?
It has a labeled kitchen, but we have been informed that the kitchen does not constitute a full, functional kitchen, and there's some questions as well that would, following up with the, that were raised in the CDC about what specifically and why it was characterized as such, because we, the, the members of the Community Development Committee also asked that very specific question about the kitchen and the functionality and why it was or wasn't included. The issue being, obviously, that if it was a kitchen, it could be an ADU or an alternate dwelling unit-
Right.
...as opposed to a guest house. So that was sort of the, the discussion, I guess-
Right.
...that would happen.
Yeah, we asked the same question to the architect, and he was a little bit-
Fuzzy?
Fuzzy.
It, it, I don't see why it would be fuzzy if it's, if it's a accessory dwelling unit. It doesn't need a CUP, does it?
Well, it says, it says kitchen on it, but the thing is, he said, "Well, it's just a refrigerator and maybe a microwave or something else in a counter space, so you can put drinks and stuff across there and so forth, inside out." So it's, I, I think it's best that we, we-
Okay.
-table it for, for the month and, and come back and look at it later on, after everybody's had the opportunity, including council members, to weigh in and, and have some time to think about it.
Ray, I, I agree with you. I, I raised some questions of Ray today, and, and we had a conference call with Steve, and, and I, I think it, it definitely needs to be continued for further discussion on this.
I think in the future, this item came up to the CDC at 4 o'clock this afternoon. It was on the agenda for the council to approve, but the CDC didn't see it till 4 o'clock. I'm not quite sure why there wasn't any timing in between that, but I would think in, in the future that that, that should not happen again. The timing on that was a little bit, was it you? Why are you raising your hand?
That's me.
That's you?
Well, I'm trying, I, I, you know, we try to have the, combine meetings so that we don't tax, overtax our city staff. So it was, we didn't realize, I guess, until we saw what was, what had come before us, that it would cause a problem. But we, I think we've addressed it by delaying it till next time to give everybody an opportunity to look at it and, you know, chew on it a little bit.
Sure. And I do have some questions. Next time it does meet, I did notice it had fire sprinklers also, and one of the things that I want to know is why it does have fire sprinklers. Typically, that does not occur in homes of that size, so I wanna make sure it's not another licensed facility that we may not be aware of that is being built.
And we would certainly welcome any questions, and that encourage the council members that have questions to allow staff to go ahead and research those and get back to you and, and bring that information forward before our next meeting. So I'd encourage you to bring, or any member of the public would like to ask any questions, both Ray, Pascal, and myself will be available to, to look into any questions that you or the public may have.
Do we have public comment on this?
Is there anyone here from the, to speak, is there any here, one here from the public to speak at the, this hearing? Okay, hearing none. Is there any? Oh, yes.
I just have a question.
Can you come up to the podium, please?
Name and address, please, ma'am.
I'm Lily McBee, and I'm on Crestview, so I'm right around the corner. I did get the public notice, so there was a public notice done. I just have a question. How is it an accessory unit or even considered a guest house if it's a vacant lot? So usually, accessory units on the back of the property.
Well, he's, he's actually submitted his entire plans for the property, which includes a two-story home and the accessory, whatever the dwelling unit is behind, along with a porch between the two. So what he's doing is asking for a CUP so that he can continue with moving forward, because without that, because we have a height limit on the dwelling units out in the back. So he wanted to clear that up before he moved forward with the entire project.
I get it. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Are there any comments, further comments or questions from the public? Okay. Councilmen, council members, is there any further discussion regarding this item? Okay, since we have a motion and a second, please vote.
For what is the vote?
Yeah. The vote is to continue the item until-
Up a ten item.
Until the next regular scheduled city council meeting, which is October 23rd.
So it's not going to the CDC?
It will be going back to the CDC. It prior to, they've asked that it come through the CDC. But it would have to, the CDC would not have, be the final decision-making body regardless.
Right.
So it would have to come forward for the council, so at this point-
I just wanna know what the process is.
It will go through CDC and then come back.
It's from the CDC and then come to us?
Yes, ma'am.
That's what the motion is.
That passes by 5-0 vote.
Okay, now we will consider the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine and are usually enacted by one motion approving the recommended action listed on the agenda. Any member of the city council, staff, or the public may request an item be removed from the consent calendar for discussion or separate action. Council members, are there any items you would like to remove from the consent calendar? Is there a motion to approve the, the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
So movement, motion and second. Please vote.
That passes by a 5-0 vote.
We now move on to new business. Our first item of new business is the Villa Park High School Measure S Science Center. Staff, please give the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 11 is a, item that you'll recall, the city council previously took, took action September of 19th of 2017. At that time, the council raised a number of issues about questions about the new project, et cetera. The Orange Unified was extremely prompt in getting back to us, and we resolved a number of the issues over the course of the last probably four to five months. We've been dealing with one specific issue, which was a traffic flow issue. And I'm pleased to report, after considerable discussions and some creative thinking on the part of both the city and Orange Unified School District staff, and compromise on both ends, I think we've come to a solution that not only deals with mitigating factors, but from our perspective at city staff, it improves current conditions, which is a rare situation where you actually improve something and not just mitigate it. So we believe that as a result of the, the discussions we've had, that we will basically approve it. Now, we will improve the conditions, and I'll let Scott deal with that just a second from the Orange Unified. I do wanna say that it's our understanding that the Orange Unified will be moving forward with a notice of exemption, requesting that of their school board. So given the fact that the city council took action and expressed concerns in the past, I wanted us to go on record and say that we concur. It's my recommendation that we concur, and I personally would like to thank the, Scott and Mr. Rivera for, and, and the superintendent for all the work and time they dedicated to help us try and come up with something that works for the residents. So anyway, and, and Akram over here is a, a sort of combatant in arms with me, and I do appreciate his work because he, he helped us, and he actually, at one point, I think Scott looked at him and says, "Okay, Akram, what do you want?" And, and we got to a resolution, but it was a plain speak that Scott brought forward. So he has a PowerPoint presentation, which we'll share copies with you, and I'll, I'll defer to Scott in the school district, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve, appreciate it. Scott Harvey, I'm the interim senior executive director of administrative services, and good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff, and community members. It's my pleasure to talk to you today about the traffic flow plan for the Villa Park project, but I also wanna just, for the, for the audience as well that may not be aware of the project, I'm gonna do a very quick overview. So I just say next slide, and we'll go through pretty quickly so that we can update you on the project itself, and then we'll get into the traffic flow plan. So just to get started, and the first slide is, the next slide would be an aerial photo there of where the construction site is. You could see that's an existing, that's the existing 300 building there. This is going to be demolished to make way for a 47,000-square-foot building in that basic same envelope of space, although there are some changes to that. So on the next slide, it will show where the building is actually going to be placed. It is closer to the setback, meaning it's closer to the sidewalk, and one driveway is actually demolished during the process of the building process. So that will happen along with the demo of the 300 building. So just to give you an idea of where that building is on campus, it's right there next to, I guess it would be Center Street would be the closest cross street going to the north and south, and then obviously, it's on Taft Avenue. The next slide will show you the front view of the new science center. This is the view, I guess it would be cat-a-corner from Nichols, where you're looking at there. And so you can see it's a two-story building. It does have that blue colored glass that is part of the process of construction, so it's a slightly tinted, it's not very, very blue, but that's just a rendering. So that is the building and the way it looks in the front. And then the next slide is the rear view, and this is the rendering in the back. You can notice the increased landscape area. While very nice to look at, it's also an area for bio-retention, where drainage can be used for self-irrigation and also provide a way for water to be better pooled on that site, because behind that building, if anyone knows Villa Park High School, it's an area where a lot of water gathers. It was a drainage area there, and this bio-retention will still aid in that drainage with new pipe and things like that, but it also has areas that are made to gather that water, use it, and better, and better provide for the environment around that building. So it's a beautiful project. Again, you can see how the colors tie in with the rest of the campus with the, with the light blue. So it's a building that will look new, but it won't look different. It will, it will mix in and mold in really nicely with the existing features of Villa Park High School. Then a synopsis of the project itself is on the next slide. So we, we can see here 12 new laboratory classrooms. These are large chemistry-style classrooms and are, are built to be flexible learning spaces as well, that you can move the furniture around, but there's also casework around the perimeter of the room to provide for the science lab activities. You have two general classrooms, two medically fragile classrooms, which are not currently available on that campus, and then that, that will basically make up the structure of the building with nine portable classrooms coming in temporarily to house students while the building is being demolished and then the new building is being built. New lockers will be put in, and as well as the, as the traffic plan, which we'll discuss in just a minute. So then, the process itself on the next slide. The project was approved by the Division of the State Architect, which is our governing body. Most people, if they're submitting plans for their home, would go to the city, or for a commercial business, would go to the city. Schools go through the Division of the State Architect, for those who don't know, and that was a process that is pretty intensive. It goes through about a five-to-six-month review, and that was approved on August 16th and is currently in the bid procurement process, with a tentative scheduled construction bid due date of November 12th of this year. Once the bid is approved, construction will begin in December with the addition of the nine portable classrooms, which will temporarily house students, and until the new building is completed, as mentioned. The portable infrastructure will be completed over the winter break, and students will be, will move into, will start during the winter break, and it'll, it will continue on into about March. And then the students will move, actually move into those, and the, and the building process will start in terms of demolition, excuse me, demolition during the spring break period. So when you're really gonna start seeing the moving and shaking on campus, besides just the infrastructure for the portables, will be in April.
Where are the portables going?
The portables are going in the backside. If you, if you're familiar with the campus, on the backside of campus, near the baseball field-
Okay.
...in the open PE area next to the ball, wall area.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's, it's a, it's a large space, so PE is gonna have to move around a little bit to make this happen, but there is luckily enough space on the fields and whatnot to accomplish that.
Will there be additional temporary restrooms to make up for those lost when you demolish the building?
There will be one temporary restroom facility, which has basically the allotted amount of bathrooms to service the nine portables with a staff and a female and male restroom for staff.
Will you lose the softball field and the grass field, or just the softball field with the portables there?
No, no, it's not going on grass at all, it's, they're going on blacktop.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, it's the blacktop PE area where they-
Okay.
...where they, like, line up and-
Okay.
...they do calisthenics on that area. So that, that's staying, all the field is staying in play.
Very good, thank you.
Yeah. And so to get to the actual traffic flow plan, our SEQA, which is our California Environmental Quality Act process, has been underway, like Steve mentioned, for almost a year. We've been meeting with city staff. We also have consultants working on this from Placeworks, who have done other projects in the community as well, so they're very well in touch. They actually did the, the demolishing of the historical building last year, and they provided all of the documents that were necessary for that process. They're also working with us on this SEQA. So they're well in tune with the city. They did a, a very in-depth study, brought traffic engineers on vol, onboard to be involved, and this is where we are today, is bringing this forward to our board for a SEQA exemption tomorrow night. So the traffic flow, there were some concerns about the driveway, because as I mentioned, with the science center moving forward and the footprint of where the 300 building is, one of the driveways was going to be demolished. One of those driveways is a ingress area for left, left turns and right turns, so we're basically taking out an entrance to, to the property. And the city felt that that was concerning because it would displace another 115 cars onto Taft, turning left into the parking lot in the most westernmost driveway. So if you're looking at this, this map on the very left-hand side, that left driveway, that's where those cars would be displaced. So in order to provide for another left turn and then also avoid displacing so many of the cars, we talked a long time, and we came up with a plan that would allow for a pretty dramatic change to the way that traffic flows on this campus. Right now, on the far, I'll just start on the left-hand side and move over to the right. The left-hand side is the big thoroughfare onto the campus, meaning that that's the drive, or the, you know, area in Taft that turns from Santiago onto Taft and then into the parking lot. That's an, an ingress egress, basically in-out driveway at this point. We would be changing that into an inlet-only, and controlling that with medians and things like that, so students or visitors or parents could not go back out that driveway. It's only- It's only in, that's the only inlet that you can have from that side. That would go into a new drop-off zone, which would be constructed like in a median style with all the proper ADA signage, fencing, sidewalk, truncated domes, things like that throughout that whole median area. There'd also be an area where staff can park, you can see that shaded blue area, so if they pull into that lot, they can pull into that staff area and park there, and there'll be signage for staff only, things like that. The traffic will then either go into the parking lot to park if you're a student, or a parent, or a staff member, although you probably don't want to park in the student lot if you're a staff member, and then those that want to move on will move on through the drop-off zone and either drop their student off, or they can continue. It would be two lanes, so they can continue on, and then either turn left out of a brand-new stoplight area and opening where Spartan Way is, which is Nichols Avenue. And Nichols Avenue only has a three, you know, Nichols and Taft is only a three-way stoplight. It would become a four-way stoplight. So that would involve quite a bit of engineering, so we brought on a engineer from DKS, which we board approved, which are board approving tomorrow night, and then we're going to hopefully use that, the services to construct, or help construct the new stoplight, and also talk about some changes to Taft itself, and we'll talk about that in a minute. So if you're a parent coming across, you go into drop-off one to drop-off two, and through drop-off two, you could then turn right. Now, if you're coming from the other side of town, if you're heading to the west, you used to be able to turn into the parking, or turn into a pickup/drop-off area that we've taken away by moving the Science Center forward. So now you'll be able to turn into Nichols, and then can move over towards drop-off zone two, drop your student off, and then exit outright. If you want to turn left, if you're coming in that way, it's not possible. If you really wanted to turn left, you'd probably come over from the other side, but the whole point is, most people are going to drop off and go back to the way they came, so this is a way to keep traffic flowing in the right direction. So that was an add-on that we talked about exclusively. So the biggest change is really Nichols itself, creating the stoplight, creating the new inlet there. It is an in-and-outlet. You can see there, there's two directions of traffic that will be separated by a kind of pork shop-style median, so it'll be very difficult if you're turning left to turn into that second driveway on drop-off zone one. You will not be able to do that, and there'll be some cat marks there and things like that that we've been talking about to direct traffic, not to turn into that area, signage, things like that. So that's the basic of the plan, but also, you know, it will help other cases, meaning those that are turning into Nichols, turning left onto Nichols going east, are now able to have more free traffic, because people are stacking up on the street. Part of the plan would be to create a dual queuing zone, and I can have our traffic engineer talk a little bit more about that if you have questions. But basically, it's just, right now, the turning lanes into, eastbound, turning left onto Nichols going north, is backed up against the same driveway or same left turn that turns into our parking lot. So they're kind of like this now, they're back-to-back. What the plan that we're proposing does is create a parallel side-by-side turning lane, which will allow for queuing on both sides, meaning that there'll be a lot more opportunity for traffic to be queued in a left-turn lane rather than backing up onto the street. What this means is that the street will have to be restriped. There will be some changes and potential changes to the bike lane areas, so that's something that we wanted to bring up, but also, we'll be working with the city exclusively and Akram on talking about what that looks like. But there's no widening or anything like that, it's just strictly a restriping and, of course, the signal. So that's the traffic flow plan in a nutshell. I hope that wasn't too much. I do have my traffic engineer here at the end of the presentation who can answer any call, I'll bring him up now if you want, to answer any questions on that flow plan. You can go past the next slide, I think I talked through that one.
I had a question about, I assume we took into consideration now that the athletic field is, you know, being worked on, there was a cut-through there that a lot of people went that way to drop kids off to school. Has that been taken into consideration as well, and has that impacted the Taft traffic now?
Staff, we discussed that. Based on the discussions with the schools, the school district staff, they will be reopening that entrance on Santiago after they complete the project at the track, and that has been incorporated. So we did do the traffic counts on that as well, incorporated it in, so that was considered, but that's an important exit point, too, from the campus. So, that will be reopened, and that's part of the frustration people have now, because obviously the project is in place, but that has been taken into account, and there will be an access/ingress/egress point there.
But we're still a year away.
Well, I think that's what he's going to talk about on his next set of slides. You're ahead of the game.
The, that driveway, we talked about a lot, there's not a lot of use on it. There is some use on it, but it's not so significant that we felt that we needed to update that area and that type of drop-off. There were discussions on that, but it never materialized, because based on our traffic engineer's report, it wasn't something that was so needed because of the amount of traffic there was not very high in terms of the flow.
Okay. Excuse me, while we're on the Taft-Nichols intersection, currently there's a crosswalk, and I believe a controlled light for pedestrians crossing Nichols, and also on the east side of the Nichols-Taft intersection, crossing Taft to go across to the high school. Will there be a crosswalk from the west side of the Nichols-Taft intersection?
Yes.
That would be out of wonderful.
Yes, there'll be crosswalk, it'll be a four-way, well, I don't know about four-way crosswalk, we'll have to talk about that, we haven't discussed that, but at least a two-way crosswalk, meaning that...
So currently, we have one across the front of Nichols, and one on the east side of Taft, Nichols going from, let's say, the north side of Taft to the campus.
Yes.
Will there be, my question is, will you be adding another crosswalk across Taft on the west side of that intersection?
We'd have to look at that. I don't think so. Akram could better answer that, but what we've talked about was just adding the, or moving the existing one that's kind of a little bit further over from Nichols, actually onto Nichols.
Okay.
Because now it's a thoroughfare across.
Yeah, that may provide additional pickup/drop-off space on the west side of, west side of the Nichols Center.
And I just want to note, while we're talking about that, too, no through traffic can come from Nichols into the parking lot. So if you're coming from Saravilla, you're coming that way, you cannot go straight into the parking lot. It will be restricted, and it will have signage there that says, "No, no straightaway," and the only way you can do that turn is either turn right or left in from the cross traffic.
Okay, and finally, will there be a pedestrian crosswalk across the entrance of Spartan Way into the campus?
Across Spartan Way into campus, we are working on that, yes. A path of travel from the sidewalk, you're saying?
Yeah, and so you can continue on the sidewalk along Taft from the west side of Spartan Way to the east side of Spartan Way.
Yes, we will be working with the city on that specific plan, but yes, we talked about that.
I'll be looking forward to updated maps showing that.
Yeah, this is just conceptual, we'll have full engineered plans, and I'm sure Akram will have a lot of red on them.
Okay, thank you.
And then, just real quickly, just because I think last meeting that we had, we wanted to update you on, are there any questions, first of all, for the traffic engineer, besides those that have been posted?
If the city manager and Akram are happy, we're happy.
Okay, so just real quick, then, on another subject, I know that we're talking about the SEQA exemption, but I also want to just bring up the synthetic track and field. I don't think I showed you a rendering. This is what the rendering is for the track and the field. It is a gray track, so it's a little bit different, and you have the multicolored field, meaning it's an alternating green pattern, so it's a snazzy, catchy-looking place, and so it's a facility that really stand out to the community if you're traveling on Santiago and you see this. So it's pretty neat to finally see the renderings, you can get a sense of where you'll be entering in the property and seeing the fence line and things like that. So that's our rendering of the field itself. So the next slide just talks a little about the schedule and the process. So, construction has already begun, obviously, will continue through December 5th or so is our tentative date. Phase two will start up once the DSA plans have been approved. DSA for this type of access control work, meaning the walkways and the fencing around the track surface, will be about three to four months, and then after that point, we will start construction in May. And that construction will continue on through August of 2019. So there will be some ongoing construction right after the actual synthetic track and the field are placed, so there's some time needed for us to get into construction. So it's really still a construction zone during that time, and that's why the timeframe we talked about was, you know, longer than just the time it will take to descend, from now to December 5th, to construct the actual, or lay down the material and the track itself.
I think you quoted 11 months in the past, are we still on target for that? And is there any possible way of reducing that timeframe?
It's possible, it just depends when the plans come out of DSA. So if the plans, if the DSA process is able to be expedited, or it does not take as long as we anticipate, then construction will start right after that. It's our goal to, especially here at Villa Park, knowing the community loves this place and uses it, and it's a recreation, but also, we've stated in the last council meeting, which we'll state again, Saravilla is available to the community to walk that track if you'd like, and that'd be after-school hours, of course. Doesn't have lights or anything like that, and neither does Villa Park High School, but it is available, and we've started to open the gate during those times so people could have access to that field. So that is a little caveat to say, you know, we're sorry, we're closing this down, but there is an alternative, and you can work with our staff if there's any issues with getting into that gate.
Can you talk a little bit about the synthetic field? I know there's been some controversy involving synthetic fields. It's usually, I think, one or two manufacturers who've had some significant issues, and what the thought process was in that, and I'm personally looking forward to it, and I know many sports clubs are looking forward to it, but if you could maybe address that.
So, there's two things you have to consider, is the turf itself, the quality of the turf. So we looked into many different opportunities on that, different companies, we looked at the material, and a lot of it's the same, but a lot, there's some differences in the filling material that you could put in it and whatnot. So we did extensive research on that, talked to other districts around our neighboring districts, the different people that have just installed them within the last four years, came up with a comparison matrix, and then we decided to go with Kaya, who is an ACT Global product, and that's, you know, I've gotten nothing but good, you know, results from people I've talked to, they've got nothing but good results from the product. We also went and visited a site in Santa Ana that has the material, and I thought it was brand-new, it was basically installed four years ago. So, this product has been proven, but the way that we've also kind of vetted that this product would be better suited for our students and our program is the fact that it's going to be installed over asphalt, meaning most fields install over dirt, and then they have a drainage system underneath that dirt that allows for the percolation of the water. In this case, we're asphalting the field, it's going to be done by Ben's Asphalt, who's a local company. They do the track portion, but they also will do the field. And what we do is, on top of that asphalt, we put a sports pad, which allows for additional movement and cushioning. So, the turf goes on top of that, and there's a filament in there, and there's also sand involved in that as well. So it's a kind of a three-layer approach, and what that does is it creates a better, safer surface for the student athlete. So it's not like you're, you know, on dirt sometimes it could feel like cement because it's compacted down so tight, but in this case, you have the sports pad, it also acts as a drainage system to go to the sides, and then that drainage goes out, you know, into the soil. It does not drain out into the city streets. So we've been able to capture all that water onto the site, percolate it out through a percolation process. So, this is the current status of the construction, you can see behind you there. The curb is being formed as we speak, the field is compacted and ready for the next stages, which will be the installation of drainage and the installation of turf eventually, or asphalt and then turf.
So how does the water that falls on the field, you said that it's, the field will be underlaid with asphalt, how will the precipitation find its way off the field?
Right, so that's what I was saying, so it has a slight crown to it, like a 1% crown, and on top of that asphalt is a padding system that has notches in it, and that funnels the water off to the sides.
Okay.
It goes into a slot drainage system around the track, and then eventually into a percolation zone, which is basically a 30-by-20-foot area at the end of the, what we call the D-zone, so outside of the end zone, that percolates, that gathers that water and percolates it through. So we vetted that through a, you know, soils report, and we have engineers on this project to make sure that that water is not going to be dispensed out to the storm drain system. There is an emergency outlet, if there was some kind of torrential, but we're able to capture, you know, a 30-year storm worth of water on that field. And from what we saw in the examples of the same type of field, the field can drain, you know, full of water can drain in less than five minutes. So it's truly an all-weather field.
And we have type 5 clay soils here, which don't percolate hardly at all, so...
We had to go down to seven and a half feet to find anything that was percolatable, yeah. So, there's these large, what we call perma-void systems that filter the water through, and then it eventually percolates at a slower rate, so it kind of captures the water first, excuse me, and then percolates down through the seven-foot gravel section and then into the actual soil, so...
Okay, and the track, I understand, is a rubberized asphalt?
It is, it's a sandwich-based track system, a three-layer sandwich.
I may pitch a tent.
Yeah.
Another question about drainage, I understand, I've not experienced it or seen it myself, but I understand that the current portable area floods during significant precipitation events, is that being, will that be addressed as part of the temporary modifications?
Not necessarily, no.
And also, where you're putting the new temporary structures, will they also be subject to flooding?
Well, we're hoping not, no. From what we've noticed at that particular area of the blacktop, it doesn't tend to get a lot of, you know, caught precipitation and puddling. It's further down towards the actual fields, where that water kind of naturally makes it down that ridge and then into that area. Over by the portables that you're talking about, there is a section that's slightly lower, where it dips down, and unfortunately, you know, with this project, we don't take care of that issue, but we are looking into various deferred maintenance issues on campus to try to take our district money and use it to best serve, so repaving those areas. But it's all part of potentially looking at a master plan for this, which we already have a master plan, but looking into additional, you know, facilities in the future, we'll have to address that. And then there's, you know, a floodplain issue that we have in the city as well, which we all, I'm sure you're well aware. So there's a lot of different issues that we have to deal with, water on that campus, but in that area where the new portables are going, that's not an issue from what our architects have told us and what we've witnessed on-site.
Well, the portables will be up off the ground, but the walkway to them, will there be some way to elevate the walkways or something so that the students...
We'll make sure it's safe and ADA-ready, but in terms of changing the entire drainage around that area, that's not part of the plan.
Okay. Council, do you have any questions?
So I just want to close by saying we appreciate all the support of you as a council. I wanted to really give a, I know it's a long presentation, but I wanted to give you a really thorough understanding of what we're doing on this campus, and it's not just for us, it's for the community. Our students are part of your community as well, and some of your kids as well, so I want to make sure that we give all the information that we can and update you as much as possible. So thank you for your support, and thank you for Steve Franks and Akram's support in getting to this point with the traffic flow plan. We hope to have your support and get our SEQA through an exemption. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any, you have a presentation?
Just have a couple of closing comments.
Can we turn the lights back on?
Yeah. The district is taking our responsibility for Measure S very seriously, and we want to ensure the community that we are getting the best people that we can to build the best facilities that we can, because these facilities are going to last us for 50 years. And I say 50 years because generally, when you have a bond program, that's how long it'll take before you can touch the facilities again. So we're making every effort that you're going to be proud of these facilities. I promise you that the Rams and the Chargers will not be on the fields before you, but we're going to be all proud, and I'm looking forward to you at the groundbreaking ceremonies for you to be there, and we believe that you're going to be highly impressed with our facilities once we're finished, because there's not too many opportunities that we have to touch our buildings, and this will be the first time in about 48 years that that happens. So wish you a good night.
We're all looking forward to the opening ceremonies, too, where the... We're all looking forward to the opening ceremonies too, or the groundbreaking. Okay, any other comments?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay.
Do we have to vote on it?
So, Mayor, I just recommend that we, it's just a vote of concurrence that we're, so that we raised concerns in the past, that simply that we, the council, they could, staff could relay to the school board tomorrow night that the city has met and our concerns have been addressed. And I think that's what I'm asking for, recommending.
I'll move approval of the staff recommendation.
There a second? I'll second it. It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Passes by a 5-0 vote.
Cool. Okay, next item of new business is the Parker easement agreement approval. Staff, please give the staff report.
Okay. Item number 12 is one of another many things we've been doing on, I'm going to say, Saravilla Drive and Valley Drive. The resident in the corner there has a, we've been in discussions with him. The easement for the city moves out very, very far into his, into the slope. He, right at this point, the fencing has deteriorated, there is not full fencing around his property, so there's a couple of issues from our perspective, a public safety issue, but then also we have the, preserving the rights of the easement. So in discussing with him, we've had considerable discussions with Mr. Parker, and we believe that we've come up with an agreement that allows him to put some fencing up, to allow some safety measures, preserve our line of sight and visioning issues, and at the same time, should there be any issues there, he would, at his expense, remove the fence, and we would be able to access our easement. So this is sort of a, from my perspective, a win-win situation that we can move forward, and I recommend approval. And Akram and I are both available to answer any questions you may have.
This two came before the CDC, and we recommended it come before the council tonight for approval.
Council members, do you have any questions of staff?
Just want to point out the fact that Mr. Parker and Mrs. Parker, their property's within 500 feet of my residence, but I don't believe there's any value added or any conflict, correct me if I'm wrong, or in any way, shape, or form, I should have to recuse myself, but I did want to point that out, make sure that that was vetted through our city attorney, and obviously if you have a different opinion, I'd be happy to step outside on this matter.
I don't have a different opinion.
Okay, right. Besides that, I think it's a great project, and I really appreciate the continued contribution of the Parker family in this community.
Okay. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to comment? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
That passes by a 5-0 vote.
And FYI, the Exhibit B agreement, the construction standards were put on the dice in front of you that was inadvertently left out of the staff report.
Exhibit B. Exhibit B essentially is there, and that will be a part of the conditions.
For what?
For the fence, the construction of the fence.
Why, why did we have it only on this, but we don't have it on other? Is this new?
This is part of the easement agreement. It was referenced in the easement agreement that he would have to adhere to the city's requirements on building. So for purposes of that, for clarification, it was referenced as an attachment, but inadvertently it was not included in the agenda item when it was submitted. So it is simply just referencing for clarification purposes that he needs to comply with city codes.
Is this given to everybody?
Yes, it is. Anybody who pulls building permits and things, yes, it is.
Okay.
I'm not sure that number one is always followed.
Is that the time?
Your favorite porta potty one?
It's where it's placed sometimes is the problem, I think.
Yes.
I think we need to keep an eye on that.
Okay, at the beginning of the meeting, we added Agenda Item 12B, which is the Mesa Henderson Storm Drain Extension.
Well, did we need to, did we voted on that? I'm sorry, pass 5-0.
I think we did.
I thought we did.
I'm slowing up here. Mesa Henderson Storm Drain Extension was a discussion that we had briefly. The, as you're well aware, the, we're repairing the storm drain that failed on Mesa Henderson, and that is project, project is actually nearing completion. We are working forward on that. The owner of the residence next door, the property next door has, there's a, the storm drain ends, and there's a culvert that feeds into it. The property owner next door has approached us and asked if they could, at their expense, come forward and pay for a, the extension of the cement piping that we're putting in, thereby removing the culvert portion of it and extending the piping out further. The timing of this is very critical, and why it was brought to our attention is because the contractor who we are working with has been working with the residents, and he has indicated that he is going to demobilize on our project because he's nearing completion. If he has to remobilize, there's an expense he would, the owner would have to incur. So in essence, we've told the owner we're interested or welcoming him coming forward as long as certain conditions are met, one being that it be completely at his expense, and number two, that we retain all rights and it be done to our conditions and satisfaction. And so I guess in a nutshell, the recommendation here is to allow that owner to move forward with a separate contract negotiation, but allow him to connect into it and our, into our existing, and it would entail, the reason it's important to the city is not just he's connecting into it, it's the head wall that we would normally be installing at the end of our project would be moved over to the other end of his project or the extension, if you will. That being said, any costs related to that would be incurred by the resident, so they would have to incur that project. And I don't want to speak out of turn, but I know the councilwoman had expressed a concern about whether or not the other residences had, had been given that same opportunity. So I think we have received that direction or understand that, and we'll be reaching out to those other, I believe there are two to three residences, off the top of my head again, specifically identify where the property, but we would reach out to them and facilitate that same sort of offer. If they wanted to do it at their expense, we would certainly be willing to it. Time is of the essence. It would not, it's being brought because it would not, we would, the work will be done prior to our next council meeting. So we needed to have that sort of effort to go forward, and we're able to answer any questions. That's sort of the overview, if you will. But Akram and I are both available, as is Todd, because we'll have to have Todd help us with some of the contract negotiations or negotiate, that we would ensure that our rights and privileges are protected.
Council members, do you have any questions of staff?
I think we'd just like to simplify it for those listening out there. We have property, a piece of property here that they have the opportunity to extend their property about 100 feet because of the construction going on with the storm drain. To do that, it's going to cost them about $140,000 because of the equipment that's already out there. He wants to extend his property, which 100 feet is a great, wonderful backyard. I just want to make sure that that opportunity is afforded to all of the residents that are there, and they certainly aren't going to have the time that this gentleman has, so that does concern me, to come up with something in the next two weeks, $100,000 and a contractor in the next two weeks. So please keep us up to date. That's something that I want as a, as an agreement to this, that we went and we got a no or a yes from the other people.
And I would clarify too, they, their property line already extends past this, so they wouldn't gain property, they would gain usable property, if you will.
They would gain usable property, that's correct.
That's a clarification. So they want to extend their property line, property line stays intact, it just allows us to put concrete and them to fill over it, so their property, usable land, if you will.
And easements would stay in place as well.
The easements would stay in place, and the city would still own, they would transfer ownership of that improvement to the city. So it becomes our asset, which is an improvement over current conditions.
As well as possibly a liability if something happens to the storm drain again. Instead of just having one or two residents, we now will have four or five residents if the storm drain just collapses in the future. It does go both ways.
Steph, we currently have a construction inspector that we hired to make sure that the, our portion of the project has been constructed properly. Now, we're talking about perhaps accepting for dedication, an extension of that. Will there be a mechanism for us to keep our construction inspector on site so he can make sure that?
That is correct. The inspector will remain until all the work is completed.
So he'll know that it's installed correctly?
That is correct.
Good, that's good insurance.
No additional cost for him, or is that cost being translated?
That cost would be transferred to her. That would be part of the arrangement.
Thank you.
They would incur the cost.
Okay.
The inspection, it's because it's, the project is going fast, we said the inspection will be, you know, occurred and paid by the city, since it's still, the contractor is working on other items, so he's inspecting the work while he is inspecting other work. However, I want to talk to the property owners, since as, as the improvement is completed, it's going to require to define as-built plans. That would require the design engineer to, you know, to prepare those as-built plans. We've informed him that he will be responsible for that cost of the as-built plans of this section. I just want to let you know, I did receive the handwriting from the property owner, and if you don't mind, I'll leave it for you, the city council. I'm requesting approval to extend the 90-inch storm drain from Mesa Drive. I have reviewed the pricing with the contractor and entered into an agreement to do so. I will pay for the enhancement, and once complete, turn over the enhancement to the city as prescribed. The intent of the work is to allow my children, nine and 11-years, additional area to play with fence and our dogs on the nice grass areas suitable for all of them. Thank you for your consideration. I was.
Yes. This definitely sounds like a win-win for the homeowners as well as the city. Are there any other comments?
No.
Okay. Let's see, I guess we need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, all they, please vote.
That passes by a 5-0 vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 13 is the information for city manager and city staff. Again, the monthly report is attached. New items are highlighted in red, although I think they just came out darker on mine because we didn't, we're saving on printing costs, I guess. Anyway, but bottom line, staff and I are available to answer questions. I'd be very candid, most of my time and staff's time has been devoted to some of the major capital projects we have going on at this time, so we're moving forward on those. But certainly, normal business has been going on, and I appreciate the work of staff because they're doing a yeoman's effort, just a lot of pressures and a lot of, a lot of things going on. So we're available to answer any questions, and I certainly appreciate you guys keeping us busy.
Okay. Any questions of staff? Okay. Let's see. We now move on to individual council member information items. Starting with Councilmember Rosini, do you have any reports or comments to share?
Just that I attended those two meetings on the 4th and the 10th. I've had a conversation with the county regarding the homeless issue and the Bridges at Kramer appointment. And lastly, I was invited, as all council members are, to discuss some challenges that Republic Services is facing with recycling and what they do with our waste products, and it was very informative. They will be reporting to us directly in the future on that. I would encourage everybody to meet with them and review their business practices and how it, and how our waste is affecting their company. I appreciate the time that they spent, and that's it.
Thank you. Councilperson Fasneli?
All right, we have Walk to School Day coming up on October 10th, so anybody out there who has children and do not live close in the area, they can park their cars in the vicinity areas and walk their child to school and take a little walk back, so that'll be something I'll be participating in. We have a candidate forum that is being sponsored by the foundation, and Councilman Pitts will talk a little bit about that. And we have our flu clinic once again. I will be here on October 25th with our two nurses from CHOC in conjunction with the Orange County Health Department. We will be issuing flu shots, and you'll know more about that, but it is October 25th, so you can put that on your calendar.
Did you want to mention the hours?
Yes, I forgot what they were.
3:30 till 7:00 P.M.
Thank you, 3:30 to 7:00. Okay, and we have 200 vaccines, which is what we had last year, and we ran out. So I'll just let you know, we turned away about five or six people, so come on in here as soon as you can. We get you out of here quite, quite quickly, actually. I will mention again, the Authors and Appetizers, that's a very, very nice event. We'll have some nice appetizers, and we do have a resident who has donated some nice bottles of wine for us for two hours to go over. We have a couple authors that are actually going to be there in Orange, so certainly if you need a ticket, I have them for you. We'll sell them all the way up to the door, so come on and see them. I also do want to make a couple comments. We have nine city meetings, city committee meetings, and for the record, seven of them, there were no meeting. So if anyone's keeping count, we only had two city committee meetings that actually met this month. And I want to take issue with the speaker that was here, and she is no longer here. The IRS doesn't take your tax return without a penalty unless it is postmarked on the 15th, when you follow the rules. The disappointment that I have in the city and in this election process is overwhelming, that we took documents from candidates and we took them after the deadline, and there was no dispute as to when the documents were taken. And there's a big lesson to be learned here, and a lot of trust that our residents are going to have to actually just build up again. It's a shame that we have people on the council, people who want to run for council, who cannot follow the rules like everyone else. We have two candidates, one who came in here at 4:59 on the deadline date and made it in here. So I take exception to the speaker who was here earlier, who knows the concept of deadlines and knows the rules. And I certainly hope that in the future, that the city and the staff and the candidates and the council have some respect for the law and for the rules. Thank you.
Councilman Pitts?
The candidate's forum is coming up, and it's, I think it's a, I participated along with Vince, and there were three seat, three open seats and, I mean, two open seats and three candidates, and it was a great opportunity for us to articulate our vision for the city, articulate what was important to us as candidates, and hopefully gave the voters of the city the opportunity to make their, an informed choice in terms of who we were and what we stood for and what we were about to do as council people. So I would encourage any and all of you to, that are listening, there's certainly not a lot in the audience tonight, but if there's a lot of folks out there listening, I encourage you to come, ask your questions of the candidates. It's a great opportunity to ask your questions, in case somebody doesn't stop by your house or shake your hand in public or whatever, gives you an opportunity to hear from the candidates what their plans are, and then you can make an informed decision when you go into the voting booth at that time, so. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Nelson?
I also met with Republic Services. You know, they're having some real issues. Based on the contract they have with us, they have part of their fees, their service fees, which are allowed to escalate by CPI up to a certain limit. And then they have a part of it that's paid for by their percentage of what they have to pay for disposal, you know, in landfills. But then they have another part called exceptional expenses. And what they have in now is some exceptional expenses. They, China obviously has cracked down on allowing refugees to come into China. Not only they cracked down on it, but they also have increased their, what they call cleanliness standards. You have to have the, the disposal has to be a lot cleaner than it was in the past. So it's really dropped the value of, you know, of what they export. In the past, it used to be they could depend on getting revenue on the back end by sending out these things to China and other places, and they can't now, so they have a real issue with that. They'll be coming to the council sometime in the future, probably in the next couple of months, asking for a rate increase to compensate for that. And I thought it was a very good presentation they gave, so I'm looking forward to coming to the full council.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, and just to Councilman Nelson's, I've had to deal with that in other cities as well, so I'm aware of that issue. I would, I would say that's definitely Republic's perspective on the recycling cost structure.
Yeah.
There are other perspectives, which I'm sure will be provided to the council as well.
Okay.
As part of our duty.
I thought they gave perspective in their presentation, I'm sure.
They're, they're smooth. It's slightly slanted, wouldn't you say?
Okay, well, at this point, I'd like to... Okay, well, at this point, I'd like to address my reports, and I'd like to address the eight-hundred-pound gorilla, which is the Fassinelli lawsuit against our city. On August tenth, I filed my papers as a candidate for the Villa Park City Council. My candidacy papers were filed lawfully, in close consultation with the city clerk, and before the five o'clock P.M. closed the filing. Note, the candidacy papers are relatively simple: name, address, telephone number, candidate's signature, and at least twenty valid nominating signatures. I had thirty. These are not complex legal documents. On August fourteenth, the city clerk notified me that I was formally qualified as a candidate for the November sixth, twenty-eighteen Villa Park City Council election by both the city clerk and the registrar voters, and verifying that everything was in order. Nevertheless, on August twentieth, the Fassinellis filed a lawsuit against our city and the Orange County Registrar of Voters, seeking to remove my name from the November ballot. On November, on September fourth, a hearing on the Fassinelli lawsuit was held at the North County Superior Court in Fullerton before Judge Craig Griffin. The hearing lasted approximately three hours, and virtually all of which consisted of the Fassinellis attempting to make their case. I had the pleasure of being on the stand for over an hour. It's noteworthy that Tina Richards, editor of The Century, and Andy Mills, reporter for The Century, chose to sit with the Fassinellis for the entire hearing. The Century edition with Andy's article was headlined, "Lawsuit Rocks Villa Park Election," was published prior to the issuance of the final ruling. On September seventh, Superior Court Judge Craig Griffin issued an eleven-page ruling not only denying the Fassinelli complaint in its entirety, but every single issue and contention raised by the Fassinellis. In summary, the court found that the entire lawsuit attempting to remove my name from the ballot was without merit. Please read Judge Craig's ruling, it speaks quite eloquently. My name will remain on the ballot as a candidate for reelection to Villa Park City Council. Now, Fred Fassinelli passed the bar and has been a practicing attorney in Orange County for some time. It is unlikely that he would have filed a meritless lawsuit against the city that he knew would be denied, especially in a court which he has routinely heard without an objective. Remember, Andy Mills and Tina Richards are good friends with the Fassinellis. Could it be that the lawsuit against the city and the Registrar of Voters was just a sham for a campaign hit piece against my candidacy on the front page of The Century? It'll be interesting to see where The Century places the article on the denial, on the Craig, the court's denial of the Fassinelli lawsuit in their next edition. At this time, the city manager and the city attorney have not been able to provide an estimate of the cost to defend against the lawsuit filed against our city. Given the city attorney's billing rate, the amount of time needed to review and respond to the lawsuit, communications, and attendance at the hearings, a fair estimate has, of twenty thousand dollars has been given, roughly a hundred dollars per household in Villa Park, for a political scam not benefiting the city but serving political objectives damn, trying to be damaging to my candidacy. The ability to file a lawsuit is a fundamental right, but this right comes with responsibilities. An important responsibility is not to misuse the process. In many cases, defendants have provided the opportunity to recover costs associated with frivolous lawsuits. However, cost recovery is not allowed for frivolous lawsuits involving elections, so our city will be left holding the bag for the scam. Beyond the financial costs, the Fassinelli's lawsuit against our city only serves to damage our reputation as a small, friendly, and congenial residential city. I intend to discuss this matter with the bar following the election. Copies of Judge Craig Griffin's ruling, as well as the Fassinelli lawsuit, the responsive brief filed by the city, and the responsive declaration filed by the Registrar of Voters and other documents are available to review through the city hall. The ruling and many other documents, as well as a review of the issue, is also available at the villapark.co website. It's villapark.co website. Residents are encouraged to review these documents and make your own decision. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do we have the city, do we have a city attorney's report?
Is there a second?
I didn't intend to give a report.
Okay.
I'd prefer not to.
Don't want no part of that.
The meeting's adjourned.